Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission's regular meeting for March 28th, 2022. This time we'll move on to roll call. Commissioner Rasmussen.
Commissioner Britton.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Chair Frazier.
Here.
Commissioner Knabel.
Here.
Commissioner Rasmussen, here. Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Wright.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to item three, which is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve agenda.
I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Wright. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Fisher. All those in favor say aye.
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 Post say nay. Motion carries seven zero. Item four on the agenda tonight is open forum. This is a chance for anyone in the audience who'd like to address the commission on something that's not on tonight's agenda. So if there's something you'd like to let us know about or ask some questions about, this is your opportunity on something that is not on the agenda tonight. So at this time I'll open the open forum. Seeing none, we'll close open forum. Number five is Chair's explanation of the hearing process. The Planning Commission is a volunteer advisory group to the city council. One of the commission's functions is to hold public hearings and make recommendations on land use and zoning matters. The purpose of these public hearings is to provide an opportunity for each applicant and citizens to present information, ask questions, and express opinions. Since these proceedings are televised and recorded for the public record, anyone wishing to speak must step up to the podium and give their name and address before addressing the commission. Staff reports are prepared and provided to the applicant and Planning Commission in advance of the meeting. The first step in the hearing will be for staff to present a summary of the report. The applicant will then have the opportunity to briefly explain the proposal and provide additional information or comments. Anyone wanting to speak in favor or against the proposal will then be heard. Upon completion of the testimony, the hearing will be closed to public comments. The Planning Commission will then discuss and act on the matter. Two complete agenda packets are available for viewing on the back table. Please do not remove those items. The city council will act on the items on our agenda at their meeting on Wednesday, April 6, 2022, which starts at 7:00 PM. The only exception will be the aggregate industry's final scoping EAW decision will be at the city council on May 4, 2022, again at 7:00 PM. With that, we'll move on to item six, 6.1, which is Kimbrough Avenue Antennas, case CUP 2022-026, with Emily Schmitz presenting.
Good evening, Chair, members of the commission. The first item on your agenda this evening is a conditional use permit. The application was submitted by Dish Wireless LLC. They are proposing to install some additional equipment on a privately owned tower. The parcel is located just off of Kimbrough Avenue and just north off of Highway 61. The 120-foot tower on the site was approved and constructed somewhere around 1998, in addition to several of the equipment buildings that you see out there today. It's a little bit of a long story and I tried to put the pieces together, but Sprint and AT&amp;T are the two current carriers on the tower. Sprint purchased some other carriers along the way, but those are the two that are out there today, along with those three equipment buildings that you see. So Dish Wireless is proposing to add some additional antennas on the tower, three to be exact, as you can see somewhere around near the top, as well as a ground-mounted equipment platform that houses an equipment cabinet, and then an ice bridge, which connects the wire from that ground-mounted equipment platform back to the tower. And with that, I will leave the recommendation before you this evening. I believe the applicant might be in the audience if there are some specific questions for those folks.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission for staff? Commissioner Britton.
Emily.
Yeah.
I noticed that with this particular, yep, that's on, application, that this new equipment is not going inside of a building. Can you educate me on at what level of new equipment do we require there to be a building to protect it and when we do not?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Britton, I will tell you this is completely out of my purview in all honesty as far as equipment goes. I will look to the audience, but I don't see...
Ryan's back there.
As far as the engineering of requiring, you know, that equipment to be installed indoors, you know, I don't even know if that's specific to a building permit, to be quite honest, Ken.
So that's not part of our code typically?
I better not speak directly to that, Ken, unless I look, there's no, but we can certainly report back. Ken, my apologies, I am, yeah.
Well, normally what I see is I see it go in a building, so I assumed it was part of our code. So I don't see that as causing a problem with this application, but potentially you could take a look into that for, just so that awareness issue for...
We certainly can. And Commissioner Britton, I'll note, they did submit construction plans, you know, that are certainly reviewed by an engineering team and constructed by an engineering team. Again, there is a cabinet placed on top of that platform, so I would imagine the majority of the equipment is inside the cabinet, but we can certainly specify if additional building permits are required.
I mean, if there was just the one, it looked like there was one large one and one small one, so multiple pieces of something. If it had just been one, I probably would have not even thought about it.
Sure.
But I'm just curious for the future.
Yep, absolutely. We can report back.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you. The applicant would like to approach and provide any other additional information? Yep, up to the podium and then your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Jay Sargano. My address is 12778 Balbo Place, Fishers, Indiana. I'm here on behalf of Dish Wireless. Probably easier for me just to answer questions. There's not a lot more that I can tell you that you can't see from the drawings. They're pretty straightforward. So if you have questions, happy to answer if I can.
Any questions for the applicant? All right, thank you very much.
That's all right, no one.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, at this time I'll open public hearing on the application. Again, if you'd like to speak for or against the application, please approach the podium, state your name and address. And with that, we'll close public hearing, or public hearing on that application. Any further questions or discussion by commission? Otherwise, I'd look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, subject to the conditions stipulated in the staff report.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Fisher. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Wright. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Post say nay. Motion carries seven zero. Item 6.2, Opodan Construction Staging Area, case CUP 2022-030, with Emily Schmitz presenting.
All right, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the next item before you is an interim conditional use permit application submitted by Opodan. This particular interim conditional use would allow for some temporary parking and storage of materials. This would support the Cottage Grove apartment site that was located just to the north. This project was approved in 2021 and they're starting to get the ball rolling with construction out there. Given no parking is permitted during construction as a part of this project on Harkness and Hardwood Avenues, the developer is proposing and is working with the property owner of the parcel to the south to provide some additional parking ability for those contractors as part of that construction work that will take place, I'm assuming over several months. The applicant has indicated they do have a one-year lease, not necessarily that they will need it for one year, but that is the opportunity for them. Some specifics of the site as they're proposing and of course as the city reviewed to ensure that things would operate efficiently and most specifically safely, we've requested that the access into the parking area be just adjacent or across from the existing East Point Douglas access to, I'll call it to the south, just for ease of vehicle traffic and movement there. And then, of course, responsible to place some signage out there, especially on the trail. We'll have vehicles crossing over that trail. We want to make sure that pedestrians utilizing that trail are aware of the extra traffic that might be coming across there. And then, of course, any impacts to the site, certainly be required to restore the site, seeding vegetation, but also responsible for any impacts to the curb or the trail with that traffic that is crossing over that area. So with that, I will leave the recommendation before you this evening. The interim conditional use permit would be good, as I mentioned, for one calendar year. Any questions? Staff is certainly available. I know the applicant is also in the audience with specific questions for them.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Fisher Rasmussen.
What's the thought or the plan on getting up over that curb? Are they gonna cut that out and put in access, or are they going to put some rock down to climb up over that curb, or what's the proposed plan?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, that is an option that we've seen in the past, but in this particular situation, we certainly didn't want to see rock falling into, you know, Hardwood Avenue. So at this point, you know, they will be just driving over the curb, certainly not ideal, but again, we'll hold some escrow money from the developer and the applicant to ensure that they do complete any of those repairs upon completion of the use of the site.
Any other questions for staff?
I have one.
Commissioner Fisher.
Um, I feel like that corner right there is such a blind corner. I'm a little worried about where the access point is right in the middle there, and if, I mean, are big trucks coming in and out of there, like, is there gonna be some wide-turning vehicle trying to navigate that corner with cars buzzing at them from both ways? I just, I don't know. I feel like that corner is already kind of a problem, and I'm just wondering why that particular access point was chosen rather than on part of the road that's before the curb maybe, more north, or another spot.
Sure. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Fisher, I'll answer half of that question. The applicant is proposing that the site will be mainly utilized for pedestrian vehicle parking, so the folks who are coming to work at the site, the deliveries will go to the site itself. Now, that being said, that's not to say that there wouldn't be some trucks, but I will defer to Public Works Director, City Engineer Ryan Burfry, and to kind of give maybe a little bit more detail into why those access points are adjacent to each other.
Sure, because in the report, it talks about storage of raw materials and things, so I would assume that there would be trucks trying to navigate that corner. That's already...
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, in terms of the access point, it is best to have it lined up with East Point Douglas Road, just so you have cars that may be coming and going at both points at the same intersection. If the site were to be developed someday for a different use, their driveway would actually be in that location. It does slow down to 30 miles an hour there, and it is, you know, pretty flat, so coming out at that right angle and being on the inside of the curve, you can generally look back both directions and see pretty good. So like I said, that's actually where a future driveway was planned for as well, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Knabel?
So will any of the utilities be impacted with the, I see there's like a couple, you know, light posts kind of on each side of that post, so I mean, one of them would be directly across from East Point Douglas Road. Will that be removed, or is that staying?
That would be staying, Commissioner Knabel. Right now, they're proposing to be on the north side of that, so the streetlight would be there, and then there's some other... would be there, and then there's some other utility infrastructure there that would be kind of on the south side of the driveway access.
Commissioner Stevens?
I have a quick one. You talked about not doing rock over the curb to try to avoid rock in the street. Is there anything that's gonna be done to prevent a bunch of mud and junk coming off the parking area then? Because the, just looking at the report here, they talk about silt fence around the perimeter, but nothing specific about the in and out.
Yeah, Commissioner Stevens, so that actually would follow our code. Our grading permit code does require a rock entrance from the site itself, so we didn't quite go into those details, but it is in our code, and they would have to follow that. You're correct.
Thanks.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
At this time, I invite the applicant to approach and provide any additional information.
Paul Tucci with Opodan, 400 Water Street, Excelsior. Just to answer questions, I think more than anything, I think staff did a nice job of presenting what we're gonna do. I will say one thing, yes, there may be some storage, but logistically, anything major is going on the site. We're not gonna drop it that far away and then have to pick it up and haul it again.
Any questions for the applicant?
I have one.
Commissioner Fisher.
How many cars would you expect to be parked there on any given day?
Oh, boy. It depends on what we're doing.
Seven thousand.
No, not that many.
I know.
I'd like to say we are employing that many, but it's not. I'm gonna guess maybe 20 to 25. Depending, again, it depends on what phase we're in.
Sure.
And there will come a crossover point where we'll be able to come up the driveway that we have.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? All right, thank you very much.
Emily, maybe just before we open public comment, I did forget to ask you a question. So one of the, one of the requirements of the ICUP is that it's consistent with the zoning of the property. I didn't see it in there, but can you tell us what the zoning, what that property is currently zoned?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I believe it is on mixed use. I'm looking to Community Development Director Christine Costello to verify.
That is correct.
All right. All right, thank you. At this time, we'll open public comment. So again, if anyone would like to speak for or against this application, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Any additional comments or discussion from the commission? I'll look for a motion then.
I'd motion to approve this ICUP 2022-030, subject to conditions in the staff report.
I have a motion from Commissioner Rasmussen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Britton. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to 6.3 Cottage Grove Logistics Park Amendment, Case PP 2022-029, with Emily Schmitz presenting.
All right, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, this is my last one, I promise, before you. This is a preliminary plat amendment application submitted by North Point Development for their Cottage Grove Logistics Park. As you might recall, at the end of 2021, you saw the master site plan for the Cottage Grove Logistics Park before you, which encompasses about 252 acres, proposing nine individual parcels for development somewhere around 3.4 million total square feet. Again, that was the master plan overall. As a part of that approval, the applicant is required to come back before you with individual site plans for each of their phases. So that's a different step in the process, but I just wanted to give you a little bit of background if you may have forgotten. So the applicant has actually purchased some additional acreage that they would like to include in their development as a whole. As you might recall, like I said, nine total lots were created as a part of their original preliminary plat. The applicant has since purchased an additional 28 acres to the south of their original master site plan area, which is on the east side of Ideal Avenue. So to incorporate that into their project area, they have amended or proposed amending their preliminary plat. So a little bit of the specifics, just a couple of things to note, the city's long-term range plan does propose 105th Street to extend not only to the west of Ideal Avenue, but also to the east. So with the addition of this 28 acres, it does line up with that right-of-way for the proposed construction of 105th Street on the west side of Ideal Avenue. So with this portion of the preliminary plat, that additional right-of-way that would be needed for future construction of 105th has been included. It's also very important to note that this is just amending the preliminary plat. The developer will have to come back before you with several applications, including amending their master site plan before this 28 acres will be utilized as a part of the development. So again, you'll see that amendment to the master site plan, and then you will see that site plan and final plat applications before you, before we get anywhere near building permits at that point. So with that, I will leave the recommendation before you. The applicant, North Point, is in the audience, of course, staff for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? All right, if the applicant would like to approach and provide any additional information?
Good evening. Christina Hubusak with North Point Development. I don't have much to say, this is pretty self-explanatory, but I did want to add that we have not yet closed on the site. We are targeting on closing after Council approval on the preliminary plat in April.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? I guess my only question would be, so obviously, we saw the master site plan, the idea behind the whole plot was gonna be these buildings that were then built by North Point and then rented out to specific building, or specific partners. Is that just, it's addition of that, it's gonna be another building then on this property is essentially the idea?
So we think it's too small for a building. Once we take out the right-of-way, it will be plus or minus 25 acres. So we're proposing it could potentially be just some sort of regional detention pond or some sort of extension of parking, but we haven't yet planned it out. But given the timeline of closing, we wanted to get the preliminary plat amended before we come before you with the actual site plan.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, I'll open public hearing on this application. Anyone wishing to speak for or against can approach podium. Seeing none, we'll close public hearing. Any other comments or discussion from commission? Otherwise, I'd look for a motion.
I motion to approve subject to the stipulations in the staff report.
I have a motion from Commissioner Britton. Do I have a second?
A second?
Second from Commissioner Rasmussen. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Motion carries seven zero. Moving on, we'll go to Aggregate Industries, Scoping EAW EIS, item 6.4, Case MP 2022-025, and we'll start with Emily Schmitz.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I will spare you a whole nother presentation hearing my voice, and I will pass this particular item on to, I'll start with Beth Elliott with Stantec, who is doing the heavy lifting with this project on the city's side. We also have Aggregate Industries and BAR, who will coordinate through this presentation. But again, Beth Elliott with Stantec will take you through.
Good evening, Planning Commission. I'm Beth Elliott with Stantec. I am representing the city as a responsible government unit, and I'll talk a little bit about what that means. So we're here tonight to hold a public hearing, to collect public comments on the two documents, a scoping EAW and draft scoping decision document for Aggregate Industries Nelson Mine Backwater Project. Just to give you a little bit of the lay of the land, your staff, people representing the city of Cottage Grove on this project are Jennifer Levitt, city administrator, and Emily. On our end at Stantec, it's myself, I'm the deputy manager, and I run a technical advisory committee for this project. And Peter Miller, who is our project manager, who might actually be watching this virtually from a beach, which I told him not to do, but nonetheless. And then we also, the city has hired an environmental attorney, Peter Larson, from Larkin Hoffman. BAR will get into much more detail of the actual content of the project, but just as a clarifying point, the project location is on Lower Grade Cloud Island, specifically in the backwaters of the Mississippi River. So I believe that EAW has come before you every so often, so what I wanted to talk about a little bit is the difference between an EAW and an EIS. So we are in what's called the scoping process of an environmental impact statement. So the form that you are familiar seeing, those questions, all the questions about fish and wildlife and land use and air and other components, it's the same form that's being used in this first part of the EIS. So the purpose of an EIS is to provide information for governmental bodies from the proposer to evaluate the proposed project and the potential for significant environmental effects. This is a process and a study of potential environmental impacts. We, in an EIS, a little bit of the difference between an EAW and an EIS is it takes it one step, a couple steps further in identifying alternatives to the proposed project. That could be different locations, it could be a use of technology, it could be magnitude of the project. We also look at opportunities to explore methods for reducing the adverse impacts and mitigation. So the scoping component takes all those questions and responses that you're familiar with, and it's basically saying, okay, the, this is the potential scope of the EIS, and the next step is to basically figure out how you reduce the scope to the critical elements that need to be carried forward into the EIS process. So why an EIS for this project? It is mandatory based on state rules, and the state rules identify the local jurisdiction, city of Cottage Grove, as the responsible governmental unit, the RGU. And there's two components of the rules that the project relate to, and that is development of a facility for the extraction of mining of sand, gravel, or stone, and development of a facility to do those things in sensitive shortland. So the role of city of Cottage Grove as the RGU, so as I mentioned, the city of Cottage Grove is the responsible governmental unit. That means the city has the responsibility to work with Aggregate Industries to develop a process that really creates an adequate EIS in accordance with all the rules. The city and Stantec is facilitating monthly technical advisory committee meetings that I will get into a little bit. It is the role of the city as the RGU to receive comments and determine adequacy of the final EIS at the very end. And it's the role of the city council, oh, and actually, the city council, early in March, first of all, they approved an income agreement with Aggregate Industries that pays for staff time, Stantec's time, and other components, but the city council also, at the beginning of March, identified an action to issue these documents for scoping, and I'll talk a little bit about that. So the next role for the city of Cottage Grove is to actually issue a permit. Aggregate Industries already has a mining permit, and so they are continuing to update that annually. This will be a new permit, and there would be a combined permit in the future. Is that right, Emily? There'll be a combined permit in the future?
Yep.
So Aggregate Industries is kind of going down two parallel paths. They are renewing their annual mining permit with the city, and then after the adequacy determination, at the end of all the EIS process, the city will decide on adding a new approval to that permit. So I mentioned that we are in the scoping process. This is an extensive process. We are at the very beginning of it. So there's, I would say, three main lanes of an EIS. We're in the scoping process for the EIS. And like I said, this is to identify the primary topics that should be carried forward into the draft EIS, which is the next phase. So there's two documents that have been published at the Environmental Quality Board's website, a draft, or a scoping EAW, as well as a draft scoping decision document. So those are live, those are on the EQB, they were on your website, they were published by the EQB, and we are in a 30-day comment period right now. And then, once that process is, that 30-day comment period is done, we'll probably get a lot of comments that will combine with the comments the public gives you tonight, and there will be an additional council action on May 4th. Now, after that, and the council will act on the topics that get carried forward into the draft EIS process. And that process is extensive to create the draft EIS, and then it includes a variety of studies, and then we'll move forward into the final EIS process. Each of these phases has their own commenting period for you, for the public, and for state agencies and others. So one other thing to keep in mind, that there's a lot of agencies with a lot of roles related to an EIS, lots of checks and balances. So the city has a couple of roles that I described, but there's a variety of other state and federal agencies that have permitting review and permitting approval. And so those processes are kind of happening parallel in some ways, so no permits can be issued until a final EIS adequacy determination, no permits. But a lot of agencies are interested in collaborating with the proposer now to make sure that all of the permitting requirements happen as this process goes along. And so the point of the EIS is that it is a process, and so it's really about setting up the issues and opportunities, and then permitting happens afterwards with all of these other agencies. So I mentioned the technical advisory committee. This, the, one, it's actually written into the rules that collaboration should happen with state agencies in particular, in relation to an EIS. It is an extensive process, and the point is to put all of these issues on the table. So you need to have the right people at the table. So this is a list of the membership of the TAC, and their purpose is to act as a representative both individually for their technical expertise, as well as to represent their organization. But it's very, it's been very clear that their participation in the TAC doesn't mean approval of a permit. It is part of a process, and they're participating as a collaborator. And so that is, that process started in February, and we've had two meetings so far. So a little bit more about the scoping schedule. We are on March 28th. You are holding the official informational meeting that's required by the state rules to collect public comment, and we will move on to, this schedule has been expanded a little bit to give us a little bit more breathing room once all those comments come in on, from April 14th. So we actually expect a city council action on May 4th. So that's a slight adjustment. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna hand this over to Shanna Brown from BAR Industries, and we're going to, she's gonna give you a lot more information about the content, and then we can answer any questions she and I that you might have.
I'm Shanna Brown. I work with BAR Engineering, and BAR is Aggregate Industries' consultant on the project. So that means our role on the project is to support Aggregate Industries in data collection, in drafting the EIS text, in working together with the city and the city's consultant, you know, to develop a document that is factually correct, that's objective, that appropriately assesses environmental impacts associated with the proposed project and any project alternatives, to help the city as the RGU make an informed decision in the end. So I have a few other representatives with me in the audience tonight. I have Patty Bessler and Tom Schmidt here in the front row, Curtis Leslie from Lafarge Wholesome. He is not here, but they're essentially the parent company to Aggregate Industries. And then Cheryl Feigum is here too. She's a project principal with BAR. So you have a variety of folks here, should you have questions. I hope between all of us, we can answer them here at the end. I just wanted to give you an overview of, you know, actually, the current operations out there right now, in case you're familiar, or if you're not familiar with it, that way you can better understand how what is being proposed might compare to what's out there today. So to give you an idea, we're So to give you an idea where we're at geographically, as Beth mentioned, the project is being proposed on Lower Lake Gray Cloud Island, immediately adjacent to the existing Nelson Mine Facility. And the existing facility is that area that you see on the drawing outlined in black. The existing facility is owned and operated by Aggregate Industries. Cottage Grove Propers to the north. The navigation channel of the Mississippi River is actually just to the south or the bottom side of the southernmost portion of that red outline. Spring Lake Park's also to the south, and Baldwin Lake is up there to the west. So the specific area being targeted by Aggregate Industries' proposed project is the area outlined in the red. That's the area that Beth mentioned we refer to as a backwaters of the Mississippi River, because the channel itself does not flow directly through it. We're going to talk a little bit more about what's, what's being proposed in that red outline in a minute, but I wanted to give you some more information on, on what happens currently on site. Aggregate Industries has been mining at the current Nelson Mine since the 1950s. This facility has and continues to provide an important supply of high-quality aggregate. It's used in mixing concrete for projects in the Twin City metro area. Some of the more notable projects in recent history that concrete from this site has supported, construction of the Stillwater Lift Bridge, the new stadium that the Vikings play in, and other large-scale projects in the urban metro area that require a lot of concrete. And not just any concrete, but high-strength, high-quality concrete. The, the challenge, though, is that the aggregate needed to, to mix concrete, the sources of it are fixed and they're finite. You, you don't find this any, just anywhere, and you can't, you can't really renew it once it's gone. So the existing mine's projected to exhaust its current reserves in about the next five years, and that's what's prompting the need to look at, at some measure of expansion. As was noted by Beth, Aggregate Industries does obtain a mining permit currently from the City of Cottage Grove. It's an annual permit for their existing operations. This permit allows them to do a few things. It allows them to mine and process sand and gravel at their existing Nelson facility. That is done, if you haven't seen it, I do have a picture and a couple slides to show you what the equipment looks like, but it's, it's a clamshell unit, so it kind of looks like the scoop you might see in a video arcade at a much different scale. You know, it goes down there, it scoops up the aggregate, lifts it out, and transports it to the Nelson Mine. The permit allows Aggregate Industries to do selective vegetation removal and topsoil stripping for the purposes of their mining operations. It also allows for them to process and then distribute the product using their onsite facilities. Finally, this permit does currently allow for Aggregate Industries to do mining 24 hours a day, seven per day, seven days per week, as operations dictate the need to do The, the permit, it's my understanding, also authorizes the type of equipment that's currently used on site. That clamshell dredge unit, there are front-end loaders that are used to transport product around the site. There's a conveyor network that, that gets the aggregate from the point where it's mined to the point where it's processed. That's all in that, that black box, if you remember that from the slide. Right now, about 700,000 tons per year of aggregate are produced on-site. The majority of that is transported off-site by barge. About 95% of the product is shipped by barge to a distribution yard in St. Paul, where it is then transported around the Twin Cities metro area core for local projects. There is some, though, that leaves by truck. About 5% leaves the site by truck, and it goes by truck just because it's being used quite locally, primarily for projects in Cottage Grove, which has seen a lot of development in recent years, St. Paul Park, Newport, as well as Woodbury. Just to give you a little bit, I think paint a better picture of kind of what, what those transportation modes look like and where their limitations are. Barging does not happen year-round. The river freezes, or if it doesn't freeze all the way, there's enough ice to pose problems. So typically, the barging, barging season runs from early April to late October, so they're, they're probably starting to gear up here now. In order for barges to travel safely, though, the river conditions need to be considered. If there's high currents or unusually high water levels or unusually low water levels, the barges may be temporarily put on hold until the conditions correct themselves. About four barges per day currently leave the site under, under current production conditions, and they do coordinate towing with Larson Quarry just located to the north. So a barge unit likely is transporting products from both sites up to the St. Paul Distribution Yard. Now, if we shift to trucking, so if we look at the trucking numbers, you know, I mentioned about 5% of the product leave site right now on truck. It's, it's less than 1,500 trucks per year. That's an average of about 28 loads per week. That's averaged over the calendar year, so some weeks it might be a little more, some weeks a little bit less. More specifically, in the summer, we just tend to see more construction in the summer, so that's why the needs are just dictating more product tends to leave the site by truck in the summertime. Wanted to touch on a couple more things associated with their existing facility and mining under the existing permit, and one of them is reclamation. The reclamation is completed as part of the current mine, mine permit, and it uses excess sand that is a byproduct of the aggregate mining process. You might hear me use aggregate and gravel interchangeably in this presentation. I'm talking about the gravel pieces. The sand, the sand really is not exported by Aggregate Industries or sold to the market. The sand is instead saved for use, using in reclamation. The sand is used to lay across the site to help re-contour it to match the original grades approximately. It's then covered with topsoil and then revegetated. So you got sand, you got your topsoil, so that way you can grow your plants, and then you have your vegetation, mostly to surr, match the surrounding landscape. Aggregate Industries is currently completing somewhat, reclamation in some portions of the Nelson Mine Site while it's mining other portions. So this is known as phased or concurrent reclamation, so at no one point is the entire site dug up at the same time. Some of it's being restored back to pre-mining conditions while other pieces of it is, are being mined. To date, Aggregate Industries has been targeting its reclamation approach to set up the site for future use as a urban residential development, parkland, or a combination of those uses. So that's kind of what's, what's out there right now. I'm gonna, I think this slide's an interesting slide to kind of transition between, you know, what's happening today and what's proposed. So Aggregate Industries is proposing to extend the life of its Nelson Facility by shifting the mining location to a backwaters area of the Mississippi River. Again, that's the area shown here in red. This area is being considered because it would allow Aggregate Industries to maximize the use of its existing facilities and its existing infrastructure, and because this part, portion that you see of the project area, it contains a high-quality aggregate that's similar to the type of aggregate that's being mined right now. Not all aggregates the same, but the aggregate in these two locations is. The area has a really interesting history. What you see here is a photo of aerial imagery from the late 1920s before Lock and Dam 2 was constructed, and the bottom image is what you see now. And it, it always plays a little bit of a mind trick on me when I look at it, because that red polygon always looks like it's in the wrong spot in the older image. So the proposed mining area was formerly upland, and it became inundated by the impoundment created as a result of Lock and Dam Number 2. So that, that is why it's underwater right now, is because of the construction of the dam. So the, the project area is about 395 acres in size. You can see it, you know, again, it's bordered by Lower Gray Cloud Island on the north, but I wanted to point out that those little islands that you see in the river in the southern side of the, that polygon, those are actually barrier islands that were created by the Army Corps of Engineers over time to deposit of dredge spoils. As they continued to dredge the channel for navigation, they needed a place for that material to go, so that is where it went. So the proposal here that we are going to be discussing tonight is a proposal, again, to move the mined area that supports the current Nelson Mine Facility and, onto a privately-owned piece of land in that backwater area of the Mississippi River. So that's right, the area where the project is proposed to shift to is under private ownership. That ownership was retained following the construction of Lock and Dam Number 2, so it is not Army Corps of Engineers land. It is, it is privately-owned land that Aggregate Industries has a lease agreement to, to mine upon. Shifting aggregate mining to this location would allow Aggregate Industries to continue using all of its existing facilities and infrastructure, and I wanted to note, you know, Beth gave the overview of the EIS process. There was an EIS previously initiated for this project in the mid, I have to figure out how to do that, the mid 2000s, I guess? And in that, Aggregate Industries was the RGU, working with the Army Corps of Engineers to develop that EIS document. The project was put on, and draft EIS was prepared, it was reviewed by, reviewed by that technical advisory committee or TAC. However, the project was put on hold in 2010 due to changing economic conditions, so that's why you may not have seen that released for public review and comment if you were to go back and do a Google search on it. It just didn't make it that far before the project was put on pause. So there's been a lot of good information collected and content prepared to support an EIS. Not all of it's modern, though, and so that's part of what we're doing as part of this effort. So aggregate mining is proposed to occur in about 230 acres of that 395-acre project area. It'd be accomplished using the same equipment that is used to mine today. Here's a picture of that, that clamshell dredge unit that I've been promising. A small channel would be cut to move the dredge unit from the current pit to the backwaters area to be used to mine aggregate materials from the river. The channel would be backfilled and restored once that equipment move happens, so it's not intended to live there forever. Because mining doesn't occur in the wintertime, winter slips would be constructed on the main shoreline to store that dredge unit during the non-mining season. Similar to depths that are mined now, you know, right now, the average dredge depth is about 125 feet to harvest aggregate materials. That'd be about the average depth in this area too, but it would go as deep as 200 feet in some places just for maximum economic recovery. As the material's brought up, there, it kind of serves like a sieve at the bottom of that dredge unit, so the material's mostly dewatered in that dredge unit, and then it's crushed into some smaller sizes within that machine, so that way it's small enough to be transported by conveyor back to the plant. Again, excess sand, just like what happens exist, under the current project, the excess sand would be saved and set aside for use in reclamation. This is just an example of what those conveyors look like. So the dewatered aggregate would be placed first on a floating conveyor that would transition to an upland conveyor and then go back to the plant for processing. Product, again, would be distributed primarily by barge, but a small amount would still be leaving site by truck. Production's expected to be about the same rates as today, so we're anticipating similar amounts of continued barge traffic, similar amounts of continuing truck traffic. So at the plant, just like what happens now, it would be washed, screened, crushed to size, and then be, be readied for transport. The proposed project's anticipated to generate, in the course of its life, about 21 million tons of aggregate, and that's expected to be generated across a 20- to 25-year period, depending on, you know, how much is economically recoverable, market rates, things like that. Project would be built in phases. Before mining begins, that dredge unit would need to be moved to the new pit and the conveyor network established. The proposed project actually plans to construct two, what we're calling barrier dykes, and I apologize, they're not shown on this drawing, but the first one would be to, at the, at the top end of the project, so the far left, to separate the project area from the main river channel. The second one would be midway through the project, where you see that little channel cut between those islands. That's where the second would go. These would serve a few purposes, primarily to protect the active mining areas from flooding, debris, things like trees moving through the area, rocks and excessive, or I'm sorry, ice and excessive sedimentation. This whole area would not be mined at once. It's proposed to be mined in phases, four phases moving from west to east. The first phase would take about three to five years, simply because it's the smallest area, you know, and then we would, the mining's proposed to transition downstream with the last phase there being shown in the dark purple. I wanted to talk just a little bit about surveys and studies. I'd mentioned that surveys and studies have been previously completed for the EIS, the former EIS, but, you know, that was done in 2010, which means the surveys and studies were done before 2010, and just quite a lot of time has passed since then. And in some cases, you know, we're, we're certainly looking at the data to see if it's still usable or what, what needs to be updated, and then if it does need to be updated, what does that update look like? So I have a few slides to talk about those studies. This one here, we, we kind of grouped them into groups, so this one here, we're calling environmental resources. All of these studies were previously completed. The cultural resources study and the air quality and greenhouse gases study, we're proposing a desktop-based update to those studies. That means that there is industry data, government data, other agency data available that we can obtain and use that's more current than what was previously reported to, I guess, assess potential effects to those resources under current conditions. Aggregate Industries did commission an update to help support a new visual effects study. You know, just understanding, you know, in some places, the river hasn't changed much in the last 15 years, in other areas it has. So there were leaf-on and leaf-off pictures taken last summer and fall to be used in visual simulations to help understand what this project might look like from various viewpoints along the river. There's certainly some engineering components to this. The next group of studies address those. Aggregate Industries completed field studies to support a lot of this in the past, but again, we're working in a dynamic system. Things change in the river. So last summer, Aggregate Industries completed field data collection for sediment and bathymetry, bathymetries like underwater topography of the river channel to help us understand that. That's really important because water depth is important to figuring out our wetland impacts in the area. So we collected new data to get a good understanding of that. Aggregate Industries is proposing to do modeling updates to evaluate sediment transport flows, including flood flows and underwater slope stability of the mine pit and of those islands. So those, that information will be updated from 2010, but we don't think that additional field data is needed to do that. We have good, good data available right now to help inform that. This slide addresses the biological resources. Some of these, specifically rare upland and rare aquatic species, there was never any fieldwork done to evaluate those. So the current EIS did complete a field study last year to evaluate the presence of rare aquatic species and the potential for suitable habitat for rare upland species. So that information has been collected. It's under review by the Minnesota DNR, who manages those resources right now. In addition, last summer, a muscle study was done to evaluate what, what is underwater. Those are currently under review by the DNR and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, who regulate those resources. And lastly, a wetland delineation was completed last summer to understand what the wetlands are in the area. So those are the field-based studies. We're proposing a desktop-based update to evaluate macroinvertebrates, fish, and waterbirds using more current information available from the resource agencies. So if you want it all summed up in one package, this slide here does it. So this one here shows on the left, you know, what Aggregate Industries has collected new field data for. All of those studies were completed in 2021 in anticipation of the EIS starting this year with the remaining issues, or I guess key issues or resources proposed to be evaluated using a desktop update with new available information. I do want to touch on what is being proposed for reclamation as a result of, or as part of the proposed project. Similar to now, and just like constructions being proposed in phases, the proposed projects also plan to be reclaimed in phases. One mined-out phase would be reclaimed while the next, while mining is beginning in the next phase of the project, moving from upstream to downstream. That excess sand that we mentioned as being stored and used for reclamation, that would be used to backfill the mine pit area. It would progress likely from the shoreline out towards the center of the pit. We do want to note, though, that there is likely not enough sand available to completely restore pre-project contours in the lake. Given current projections, mining's expected to generate about a 100-foot-deep water body in the central portion of the mined area unless an additional fill source could be identified and approved through the various permitting authorities. So I guess with that, I've probably said it a few times, but I'll sum it up one more time. The proposed project plans to mine the same type of, type of aggregate at approximately the same rate as what's being mined today. It would use the same facilities, and there would be no changes to the type of equipment that would be used. There would be no changes to the processing facilities and methods, the type of aggregate mined, how much produced annually, and the method of transport to get it to the market, whether it's by barge or if it's by truck. There would likewise be no changes to the existing labor force associated with the project, so with that, no adjustments to traffic to provide staff either for construction or for a different type of operations, and along with that, no changes from today's conditions are expected with respect to air quality or greenhouse gas, gas emissions associated with traffic to and from the site. So what Aggregate Industries is proposing to change is the location from which they're obtaining their aggregate resources. Mr. Chair Commissioner, so with that, we will leave the recommendation, which isn't necessarily a recommendation, I'll remind you that this is-
necessarily a recommendation, I'll remind you that this is just a forum to collect comments on the published scoping EAW. Again, Barr and Beth Elliott with Stantec are here to provide any answers to questions that you as the commission might have.
All right, thank you. Does the commission have any questions for either Stantec or Aggregate Industries? Commissioner Wright.
It's on. There we go. My first thought, we have kind of a high-profile project kind of north of that. Does that, does this new part where they wouldn't be mining, would that impact any of the traffic, like the waterway traffic, kind of like north of that? You kind of got to have like a boat launch that might go in if they actually approve everything with the, with the new park, with the Mississippi Dunes. You're going to have people that are kind of going to that north part of it, so I'm just wondering, does any impact that traffic area at all? What's it going to be to the south part of that? So it should be fine, but I also don't mine anything, so, you know.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, let me see if I can find an image. That's tricky. Ultimately, it will be more of a passive boat launch, so, you know, it won't necessarily be for motorized boats. Now, that doesn't mean that those water trails won't be utilized, you know, for canoes, kayaks, things of that nature, but I think it will be a little bit further to the north in that Moors Lake Channel further up there, so.
It looks like it's an F of a buffer, I mean, but at the same time, I don't know what kind of equipment's going around that area, or, you know, people are going to want to kind of go in that little sliver, where that little, I don't know, it kind of narrows out a little bit, so.
Further to the south, sure, sure. As I understand it, Commissioner Wright, most of that activity takes place further on the north side of the island at this point.
All right, thank you.
I have a question.
Commissioner Fisher.
Okay, so it looks like this is being planned for, what was it, 25 to 30 years in the future, right, of mining? The speaker had mentioned that the river is dynamic, things change all the time. I'm wondering if, as the mining happens, if environmental concerns will be reevaluated as they go, just because things can change vastly over time? I understand that the permit will have to be renewed every year, and we've done that just recently for the current mine, but I'm just wondering, over the whole scope of the mine, how the environmental concerns are continued to be monitored?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I would say with our annual review of that mining permit, you know, if there were any additional issues, you know, that needed to be addressed or reviewed more specifically, in addition to that, you know, the EIS process will certainly outline any long-term review or mitigation strategies that are required to take place with that proposed operations.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Rasmussen.
Talking about the reclamation of the site once the mining's complete, a lot of it appears to already be backwater, so when this project is wrapped up, is it going to still look a lot like it does today with a lot of backwaters, or will the islands become different, larger? Will they look kind of similar to they do today, or will it be much more land, or how is that going to look when the project wraps up?
Thank you, Chair Commissioners. So, it depends. You know, right now, the plan, you know, because those islands would still allow for fish passage and, you know, for the foreseeable future would provide, you know, some level of protection. The current plan is for them to stay in place, however. What goes into an EIS process is often not 100% what comes out the backend of the EIS process, and, you know, especially as Aggregate Industries is working with agencies like the DNR and the Army Corps of Engineers, a lot of that future use will be dictated by permit conditions. So, you know, currently, that's what's proposed, but I do think there's still a lot of those details to be worked out as we go through the EIS process and permitting.
Any additional questions? All right, at this time, then, what I'm going to do is I'm going to open public comment on this. As staff said, we're not going to be taking any action on this issue tonight. This is simply just your opportunity to provide your public comment that'll be included with the draft EIS that then will go to city council for staff to then be able to answer as part of that review. So at this time, I'll open public comment, and anyone wishing to speak about the EIS can approach the podium and state their name and address for the record. Good evening.
I'm, oops, I don't have a computer sheet. I'm Terry Schilling Gilbertstadt. Do you want my home address?
Whatever address you want. If you have a work address you prefer, that's fine.
Well, I'm a landowner on the island, and I represent PAS, but I actually live at 1760 Colvin Avenue in St. Paul, and I'm part of PAS Associates. I'm one of the general partners that leases the land to Aggregate Industries, and my husband and I also own a home at 12085 Gray Cloud Trail, and PAS also owns a home at 12075 Gray Cloud Trail. Aggregate Industries has been a good tenant and steward of the property. Our current lease began in 2001 with the current Aggregate Industries, but actually, Schilling family began leasing land for mining in the early 1950s to J.L. Shealy Company. The original company has been expanded and acquired by several different entities throughout the years, hence now Aggregate Industries. PAS proudly and confidently leases the land to Aggregate Industries. The company pays serious attention to all environmental regulations and always performs business in a sound environmental way. The way Aggregate Industries conducts business has been a major factor in the city granting them yearly permits to mine. Aggregate Industries has been a good neighbor, and there are no complaints that I'm aware of from the surrounding community. PAS Associates is confident in the high level of environmental compliance and professionalism that will continue in the next phases of mining in the backwater. Thanks for your time.
Rod Hale, 11701 Gray Cloud Trail, College Grove. I was a member of the advisory committee representing neighbors on this project, and my question might be premature, but our concern was the location of the conveyor transporting the gravel back to the pit itself, so I guess there are some options for that travel, and I just want to make you aware that we're concerned about that particular issue.
Well, I'm David Gilbertstadt, and my wife Terry and I own 12085 Gray Cloud Trail South, which is approximately 18 acres just north of where that proposed mining is. And I just want to say that, you know, as the property owners there, we're watching quite closely what happens with this project, and we don't have objections at this point. And also, I should say that I'm owner of a 28-foot cruiser in the Watergate Marina north of downtown St. Paul, and so I feel I'm a stakeholder as far as whether boating will be unimpeded going around that project.
Tom Bell, 5868 Pioneer Road South, that's in Upper Gray Cloud Island, and I want to apologize ahead of time if the answer to my question has already been given. I have unfortunately kind of a severe impaired hearing situation, okay? So my inquiry is the fact that this is the third application that I am aware of for the same project, and I know that two environmental studies had been done for two of the previous ones. I know this because I did the waterfall use each survey for the environmental impact. But I do not know why, I do not know the outcome of those. I don't know if they were refused, if they were just, we drew the application, or what it is, and I just thought it would be of interest to the planning commission to know the results of the previous studies. And I know also, in the last one, I did mention that they really don't need to do another waterfall use each survey. The area that they are proposing to operate in is really not used by waterfall. You know, they may rest there for a minute, but it's not a feeding area or so. I'm very familiar, as is Mr. Hale, who just spoke earlier, of all of the backwater areas and what uses it. And there's deer that do use the island, the islands that are, you know, they may not live out their whole life on there, but they feed there, and you see them walking on the water and stuff. But anyway, my query really is what happened to the other two or three applications? This is the third application for the same project. I'm also really interested eventually in what you're going to learn from a 200-foot hole when they extract it, you know? But it's, and on the history, I don't know if they talked about the Glacier River Warren that deposited that stuff in the first place, but thank you for your time.
Could you put that slide back up, the biggest one that showed the whole area?
Let's see what we can do here.
Yeah, you just went by, right there.
Down and work, right?
Yeah. My name's Dick Polta, live in 9600 Geneva. It's in Gray Cloud Township, but I used to live by the golf course years ago, lived down there since 1966, and I'm going to approach this from a totally different standpoint than everybody else. One of the big problems in Pool Two is sedimentation, and it's a huge problem, and nobody's done anything about it. I mean, it's been talked about, and you can Google it online. Corps of Engineers has got a dredge management study been going on for a few years, and I feel anybody that can take sediment out of that river bottom, praise them, be glad they're doing it. If you look at your drawing there, you people are all familiar with where River Acres is. On the right-hand side of that triangle they got, them fingers pointing toward River Acres, they're heading to the up part of that map, none of that was there years ago. You know, it's been placed there in about the last 15 years, it's been there. That's all sediment coming down the river, and, okay, and the Barry Island she talked about on the bottom-left side of their triangle, the Corps didn't put them there. That's sediment, okay? All this stuff on the lower-left side, them fingers coming in, that Spring Lake there. If they showed the whole thing, Spring Lake used to be six, seven feet, five, six feet deep, you know, years ago. That lake is about two-thirds filled with sediment, and fingers go all the way to the west end of it. It's working its way all the way down to the bottom right, but the point I'm trying to get at is the thing's filling with sediment. The DNR's done nothing. The Corps, all they do is dredge the main part of the navigation channel, and, you know, I worked for the Corps for six years, and they're driven by what they're told to do. Okay, and that's all they're told to do. So now, I look at their project here, and if somebody's willing to take sand out of there, by God, let them take it out of there. The only thing I'd say is, okay, anything that comes out of there, you don't put back in the water, because one of my main concerns coming up here was, okay, they dig these 150, 200-foot holes, what happens to them? I know what the Corps would want to do with them. Let's put our dredge spill back in these holes. Well, that really don't accomplish anything. Well, it does get some out of there, but I would say anything comes out, you put on the mainland of the island, and I was kind of surprised for you to say that, you know, where they're mining right now, they got these 150 to 200-foot holes, and they don't know if they have enough sand to fill them in. Well, by God, there's sand all over out there, and when they're done making these holes out in the river, whether they be 150, 200 feet deep, believe me, they could walk away from them and not fill them in, and it wouldn't take long, Mother Nature'd fill them in for them. And the sediment thing is actually getting worse, because the Corps of Engineers closed Upper St. Anthony Falls Lock and Dam here in 2015, I think it was. So when they did that, they quit dredging in the Mississippi River where it splits off to the Minnesota River. Okay, they used to dredge that out, and the sediment would drop out up in there, they'd dredge it out. They quit doing that, so that's going to work its way down into Pool Two. The Corps acknowledges that fact. Okay, what else I got? You talk about 150, 200-foot-deep hole. In reality, water much over about 20 feet deep in the river, as far as I know, is pretty much useless, because you hear lakes having dead zones where all of a sudden it gets, no sunlight getting down there, there's no vegetation, no growth. You go scuba diving, you get to the end of the weed line, it's pretty much nothing there, okay? So, but it will fill back in. Let them dig it out as deep as they want. I'm in favor of this. Like I say, let me give you an example of what the Corps has to do. Down at Lock Two, for example, when all the logs and that come floating in there, they get in front of the dam gates. If they go down and pick them out with a clamshell and pick them out of the water, they can't put them back in. Sounds stupid. So what do they do to clear them out? They grab them, keep them in the water, move them around the other side, flush them through the dam. Okay, well, this same thing should happen here. Anything that comes out stays out, and that'd be great. I'm in favor of this 100%. And then another thing with master plans for Parks now, somebody up here asked about your boat launch up there. The way it's going right now, if it continues on, you're probably not going to be able to get to it. You can't hardly get around the lower tip of that island down there, where these people's houses down there. We used to run a houseboat from Mr. Hale's house down out to the river there, and you had three, four feet of water. Well, now, your foot and a half would be good. I got a john boat, you got about that much water in places down there, it's just terrible. So if nothing is done, your boat launch might be useless in the future to be able to get to it. That whole area to the north of the island, even heading west, is filled in with water. That little, that lake that's showing there, off to the left where it says Gray Cloud Slough, that's where Mr. Hale lives. That's getting shallower every year, isn't it, Rod? I mean, it's almost useless, okay? And believe it or not, yeah, the current actually comes around the tip of that island, goes downstream, goes around tip of that island, heads back northwest, then it heads over to River Acres. You can actually see the lines in the water. And your residents in River Acres area, I talk to them quite a bit, I go boating down there all the time, I mean, you know, hundreds of hours a year, believe it or not. They're all concerned that that island is going to reach over to River Acres, and they're not going to have access to the river. That's how bad the sediment problem is. Then went to master plan for this regional park, if it comes to be, the Washington County one. Part of the plans for that park, but her sales of it, or the selling point, is to be able to circumnavigate that island, you know, in boats, canoes, what have you. Okay, well, the south end down here is getting almost impassable. Now, if you, it's not showing on here, but if you go to the west end of Lower Gray Cloud Island, where you're running the Baldwin Lake and where Ag Industries has got their mining equipment, you can just barely get through there right now. I mean, I would say in another two years, you're not going to get through there, and if it wasn't for Aggregate Industries and their barge loading place there, and they're continuing dredging that material out, it'd already be filled in. I think, Tom, haven't you had to clean that out almost every year for the last five years? You know, so, but anyway, back to where I started, let them take it out of there. Like I say, but it is, take something out, don't let anybody put anything back in that hole. Mother Nature will take care of that for you.
Thank you very much. All right, at this time, we'll close public comment. All right, at this time, we'll close public comment, and before we move on, I'll just let any commissioners that want to provide their own public comment, so that that can be forwarded on as well. So any commissioner would like to add a comment? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Commissioner Britton.
Just in looking at the picture that, that actually you have on here, I think the black lines are where your conveyors are going to go. In the, as, for each of those phases, you know, the one to three, the four to eight, it looks like that there's little stubbed black lines. I'm assuming that's where your conveyor is going to move to each time? If that's the case, then I just would like staff to make sure they work with the, you know, the residents down there with any concerns they'd have with the location of that conveyor. Because right now, I'm pretty sure the conveyor is pretty much away from everything else. And I'm not sure what's down there, but, but to just take a little bit of, and I know that you do already, but, but just to highlight that, that if it's going to be over in there, to, to make sure that we, we look at that real close.
Thank you. All right, with that, we will move on to item seven, which is approval of the Planning Commission minutes for February 28th, 2022. There are no additions or corrections. I would look for a motion to approve. Motion to approve, men. I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Wright. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Knabel. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Motion carries 7-0. Item eight, 8.1 is recap of March city council meetings, and I'll hand it over to Director Costello.
Good evening, planning commissioners. In terms of the March meetings for city council, as mentioned by our consultant Beth Elliott with Stantec, council did consider on their March 2nd meeting the scoping environmental assessment worksheet in terms of having that out there for distribution and posting. And then, on the March 16th meeting, on consent agenda, council member Thede, who's our liaison for Planning Commission, reappointed Evan as Planning Commission Chair. And then additionally, the Pine Harbor preliminary and final plat was on consent agenda at council as well. And then lastly, we had a public hearing for the renewal by Anderson expansion, the additional 330,000 square feet that was approved, as well as Pizza Ranch, and then Mississippi Landing, that project was also on council. And all of those items were approved on March 16th. And with that, I can take any questions, and then we have council liaison Kabata here, a familiar face, who's stepping in the role for Commissioner, Council Member Thede while he's out today.
For my part, I'll just say, I forgot to even look if I got reappointed, so it's a good thing it worked out, so.
By the way.
Any questions for Director Costello? All right, Council Member Kabata.
Well, nice to see you guys all again. Evan, I just wanted to highlight, you've been on the commission since September 6th of 2017.
That long.
So this, this actually made, this, this reappointment was your third reappointment on the commission, so congratulations.
Thank you.
And then Director Costello covered everything that I had wanted to touch base on. So with that, I guess I'll just leave myself open for any questions or follow-up you might have.
Any questions for Council Member Kabata? Thank you for being here.
Thank you guys as well. You do great work.
All right, with that, we'll move on to 8.2, which is response to Planning Commission inquiries. We didn't have any from last meeting. 8.3, Planning Commission request. Commissioner Britton.
I guess I'd just like to more formalize my request about the cell towers.
Absolutely.
You know, in the last 20 years, I've never seen us put up a cell tower or allow antennas to be added without making them put a building over it. My concern would be, what's different? Not a concern, but my, my question is, is what's different? You know, if I had a concern, it would be, you know, you've got these equipment enclosures out there that are going to be exposed to the environment forever. You know, if we didn't, I know you guys do a great job in review and everything, but that was just my thought, you know, is, is the reason that we put buildings on these things over the years, to protect them, so we didn't have to see rusted-out metal enclosures or worry about things along those lines. And if that's not a concern, you know, what type of maintenance monitoring do we have to make sure it doesn't become a problem? But just to help me understand a little bit more about.
Absolutely.
It just might have been, that's the way they wanted to build them before.
Sure.
But that, and things may have just gotten so small now that they didn't need such a large amount of equipment, therefore now you don't need a building. But just curious about what's changed.
We'll review some of our past antenna permits to kind of see how that kind of came about in terms of the equipment rooms, or whether we're going to start to see this, or it's more just that panel, which this one seems to be looking at the drawings for the site plan. But we'll definitely get back to everybody on that.
You look at any baseball field around the cities, and you've got a rusted-out, heavy-duty, metal, powder-coated enclosure, eventually it's going to rust in our environment, so just curious.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other requests for staff? All right, with that, we'll move on to item nine, which is the annual organizational meeting. 9.1 is to accept the 2022 Planning Commission rules. There was a draft copy of those rules sent out as part of our packet. Does anyone have any additions, modifications, deletions they want to make to those draft Otherwise, I'd look for a motion to approve the rules for 2022.
I'll make a motion to approve the Planning Commission rules for 2022.
I have a motion from Commissioner Fisher. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Wright. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Motion carries 7-0. All right, move on to election of officers. Two officers on the commission, vice chair, which is currently Commissioner Britton, and then secretary, which is currently Commissioner Rasmussen. Those are the two we would vote on. Does anyone have any nominations for those two positions?
If nobody's dying for the moment to take on those roles, you can also reappoint the same person if they're willing to do it again.
I want a speech.
So we can just reappoint the same? Do we do one at a time?
If they're, if they're willing to accept it.
Yeah, if they're willing to.
I haven't heard him say anything yet.
Is that a motion, then?
I'll make a motion to renominate Mr. Britton for the vice chair position.
Okay.
Is that, did I say that right?
I would accept that nomination.
All right. Any other nominations for vice chair? All right, on that motion then, all those in favor of making Commissioner Britton the vice chair again for 2022, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Motion carries 7-0. And then for secretary, if Commissioner Rasmussen would take it again, I would make that motion.
I'm happy with that.
Okay. Any other nominations for secretary? On that motion then, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Motion carries 7-0. If there's nothing else, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. So motion from Commissioner Britton, second from Commissioner Knabel. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We're adjourned, 7-0.